Kim, are we coordinating with C A P C on the workshop dates?
Okay.
I'll let you know as soon as it happens.
Welcome everyone to our city council meeting for Monday, September 28th. If we can call of order and establish your quorum, please.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Trey Selder.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
And Becky Snyder and Terry are absent with notice.
Okay. Fledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Two items on my part, the ordinance under new business, items four and five, we're going to have to postpone to the October meeting. Anybody have anything else? All right, if everything looks okay, move to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All in favor, sing five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Get a motion to approve the minutes for September 14th.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? If not, all those in favor, sing five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have Fire Chief Randy Yates here to, I want to have him discuss and kind of bring us up to date. I know a lot of us have been reading in the newspaper about Rod Watson and what status that is and where we are within that, so I'd like to have Chief Yates come up and give us a brief summary of where we are for that.
Thank you Mayor. Good evening Council. If you would please be some kindness, each one take one and pass it around. We'll probably have some extras, this is a summary of our report. Anytime we have a near miss or a fatality in the fire service, we investigate it very heavily to find out what happened and how can we prevent this from happening again. In the case of August 29th, we had a firefighter that sustained respiratory injuries in the course of fighting a house fire. The report covers several things and we had some assistance with it. I owe some thank you to the Arkansas Department of Labor's investigation team, to the Arkansas State Police, Fire Marshal Jimmy Kelly, and several other chiefs and officers of my staff for their assistance with putting this report together. The event started about 9:20 on August 29th, when our fire department was dispatched to a structured fire in a single wide, older mobile home on Grand Avenue located near the train depot. The first arriving crew spotted fire and smoke coming from the trailer. The fire was isolated to a single area near where the hot water heater would have been in the trailer if it had still been present. The firefighters got their equipment on and air packs on, and a team of two with Rod Watson, our injured firefighter in the lead, and Josh Byler as his backup made entry into the trailer. In fighting fires, our firefighters wear a considerable amount of gear, ranging from protective gear that includes a coat, pants, gloves, helmet, flash hood, special boots, all the way to respiratory protection, which includes an air pack, commonly referred to as a self-contained breathing apparatus by its technical name. It provides compressed air for the firefighter as he makes entry into the smoke and heat. In this case, as Watson advanced about six paces inside the front door with Josh Byler on the backup, the fire hose snagged on the entryway door. Josh Byler states that he turned to pull on the hose, and as he did, a firefighter outside began to feed the hose into him. When he turned back on the hose, he discovered that firefighter Watson had disappeared, and immediately heard a yell for help coming from further back in the trailer away from the direction of the fire. When Watson was found, it was noticed that his air pack face mask was off, as well as the flash hood and helmet. He was in severe respiratory distress, being in the heat and the smoke and the toxic products of the fire. He was dragged to the front of the trailer by firefighter Josh Byler, and there met by two other firefighters who were coming in after him. He was flown by helicopter to the burn center at Springfield, Missouri, at the Mercy Facility there, and was placed on the ventilator for a little over a week with severe injuries. One of the things that we wanted to know was, how could one of our firefighters get hurt? What went wrong? While firefighter Watson was on the ventilator, we went through his equipment, we made some assumptions, looking at the condition, we started our investigation, we requested some assistance from some technical advisors, but the final piece couldn't be put into place until Watson actually came off the ventilator and was able to visit with us repeatedly about that night. What we discovered was that when firefighter Watson entered the trailer, he said it felt that his air pack suddenly wasn't giving him enough air to breathe, and that the mask was suffocating him because there wasn't any air coming in. Now, when that mask doesn't get enough air, it sucks to your face, kind of like one of those science fiction horror movie spiders that jumps on your face, and the face mask will suck tight against the face, and when you can't get any air, the instinct is rip it off, even though that is very dangerous in the heat and the smoke. Watson did attempt to use his bypass valve, he states, and that it did not provide the relief that he expected. In desperation, he pulled the mask off and dove toward the front door of the trailer. However, being night and the trailer full of black smoke, he couldn't see the doorway and missed, and ended up going into a bedroom doorway right next to it instead, which put him in the back part of the trailer, which was where he was found by Josh Byler. We took the air pack and all of his equipment and put it under lock and key in our evidence locker, and asked a technician from the Scott Manufacturing Company, a certified technician, to come and assist us with going over the pack. A gentleman named Paul Knapp with E V S Company brought his rolling lavatory and hooked the air pack up and went through it, and we found that firefighter Watson had suffered an air pack failure on the equipment. We had supposed that perhaps he'd hit a wall or a door or something that had dislodged his face mask or his regulator, but as it turns out, he was a victim of mechanical failure. We reviewed the records for this air pack. Last year it passed with no problems. We reviewed his gear and found that with one minor exception, all of his gear is compliant with the current standards. We went through everything that transpired on the scene. We have a book of statements from our firefighters along with supporting documentation. We can't find that anything went wrong, except they suffered a gear failure. Nevertheless, while investigating this, we have several recommendations that we would like to make as part of our hoping that no firefighter goes to this again or becomes injured or hurt. One is that the air packs are showing their age. We need to cycle out those air packs as soon as possible. The bottles associated with the air packs, the compressed air bottles, only have three years of life left. We need to look at some type of program as well to start cycling out our out-of-date protective gear that we wear. We want to continue to cycle out the radios. We had a radio failure on the scene at a critical time. We wish to continue to cycle out those radios. In addition, we want to improve our compliance with many of the state and national standards that we are held to. The report is a lot more detailed than my talk tonight and give you a good overview of what all we've found. If you have any questions about this or anything, it's a little bit on the technical side, please feel free to ask me, I'll be glad to answer anything I can. Mayor?
Y'all have any questions?
I don't really have a question, but I think it would probably be good of us to get a summary for you, an analysis on the faking of the new equipment that is required to meet the, what's in this report, because since it's in this report and since it's been handed to council at this point, and since there's obviously defect in the equipment, the liability issue that has now been put on the city has increased dramatically, so I think we need a summary of the costs and the plan for this equipment pretty quick.
We met this morning, as a matter of fact.
It's already, okay.
We're in the process of presenting it to the council and getting a recommendation.
And I'm sure Workman's Cop, I believe, will help this gentleman, he should be fully covered for that, at least.
Yes, and in addition, we've had tremendous outpouring of support from the community, and was able to, Workman's Cop willing to cover so far on your wages when you're off work, in case of Mr. Watson, who works three part-time jobs and is a full-time student, they pay very little. So thanks to the community's efforts, we've been able to help him and his family with over $10,000 donations to cover his bills while he's off work, and that is greatly appreciated. We have a good community.
Thank you Chief.
Thank you gentlemen ladies.
Appreciate it. We have no one being recommended at this point on any of the commissions or the vacancies on there. We still have vacancy for the parks and also vacancy on the cemetery. So, any citizen out there listening and would like to volunteer for the parks and cemetery, please come in and get an application.
This is the C A P C, didn't Kim, is just staying on until somebody?
Kim is staying on until we get another applicant coming in, is my understanding at this point. So, at this point, we'll listen to, we'll have our public comments.
Don't, don't we have somebody here from Parks to talk?
Oh, it's not told.
We got Parks on.
Number seven.
Number seven.
Oh, Parks Christmas, I thought you were here just for great.
Hi, hello everyone. I'm here addressing the possible vulture relocation issue that is coming up, I believe. So I'd like to first thank everyone for this opport-
Would you mention who you are?
Oh yes, I'm Beth Withy, and my husband is Quinn Withy, and thank you again for the opportunity to address you. My husband Quinn and I own two lots at the lower end of Ridgeway Avenue. The vulture's roost in question is located primarily on and adjacent to our property. We strongly oppose a vulture relocation plan in any form. When we purchased our home and lots on Ridgeway in 2011, it was with full knowledge that a historic vulture's roost was located on the property. Indeed, the presence of the vultures incentivized us to buy those particular lots. We've enjoyed observing birds of many different species throughout the 30 years of our marriage, and looked at this as an opportunity to study vultures and perhaps even contribute to a naturalist kind of research on the habits of this protected species. Though we looked at various real estate in Eureka Springs for a period of two years, including other homes that were on Ridgeway during that time that were for sale, we chose to purchase our home in part because an entire wall, the wall facing the roost, is glass and affords a beautiful view of not only the vultures, but of numerous species of birds, wildlife, and of our urban forest. We've worked to allow the property to become a sanctuary for birds of all species. Vultures pose no threat to local wildlife and indeed have a symbiotic relationship with it and with humans. We've learned a great deal about both black vultures and turkey vultures since purchasing our home in 2011. They're quiet, voiceless birds, having the inability to make sound. They have never harmed our property, personal or natural, in any way. The roost is seasonal, the vultures usually begin arriving around October and leave in February or March to spend the summer in caves elsewhere. They spend fewer months on our property in town than they do away. The vultures are seldom on the ground or our roof, which they have never damaged. Once per year, usually in February, they lie on the ground and on our roof briefly before they fly to their summer nesting locations. Though there has been some attrition to the trees behind our home, due in large part to the past several years of drought, the forested area this year, visible through our wall of windows, is green and thriving. In the larger scheme of things, I think it's important to remember that vultures serve a crucial function, not just here in northwest Arkansas, but throughout the world. They not only cleanse our landscape of other creatures killed by our cars, but research shows that their digestive systems destroy deadly pathogens that would otherwise cause danger to humans. Other research has suggested that the whitewash vultures produce actually has a kind of sanitizing effect. Currently, news from around the world reports vulture populations in danger and decreasing, in part because of habitat destruction and loss of historic roosting sites, in addition to other man-made conditions. My husband Quinn and I oppose the vulture relocation program, as I said, in any form. Such programs I feel not only affect vultures, but other bird species, wildlife, family, pets, and in the final analysis, ourselves. Eureka has proven many times over to be an ecosystem where beauty and diversity thrive. We wish to continue to provide habitat for vultures and other species, and in doing so, continue to support and contribute to our diverse landscape. Thank you very much.
Beg your pardon? That's it? All right. That concludes our public comments, so our next order of business is, actually, we're going to go right into new business. We have the unfinished business with the ordinance, the bonds have been tabled until we can figure out, meeting with the bond company, that's still going on. And ordinance 2229 is postponed until, we think, next council meeting on that. The C A P C meeting is going to be pending once we get a date for the coordination with the C A P C. They want to have a separate meeting between the council and the C A P C, not on their workshop date, so we're still trying to organize and establish a date that's going to be convenient for that. And mainly, this is regarding the auditorium and what's coming up with it.
A question about that, for some of us that haven't been in town a long time and don't have the history of the auditorium, and hear all the various versions that float out there and are written in the paper and everything, I was wondering, does anybody have the background material, be it ordinances, contracts, minutes, or anything that can put together a picture of the C A P C since it came into existence and the issue of the auditorium as it relates to those two, so that I can get a picture of what has transpired, what was supposed to be happening versus happen to listen to various well-meaning versions that may not be accurate?
Sure. Our clerk, I asked a clerk a couple of weeks ago to do some research on that, and she put together, and we'll see if we can get a package to, and get out to everybody that we have on that. Yes ma'am?
Probably you need to start with, about 1979, when there was, there wasn't a C A P C, there was a Chamber of Commerce and something I think called the T L C, the Tourist Commission of some sort, and that goes back, it was, I remember reading newspapers back then about it, that was when I came to town, Marty Davis was mayor, and we used to talk about it a lot. Yes, a very varied history, depending on, how much you remember. And yeah, it was a typical Eureka thing, we did the whole thing backwards, formed the C A P C first, then formed the Historic District Commission, which was kind of backwards, anyhow, but it just goes back to that.
So, anyway, we'll get, we'll try to get some information. James probably has some more history on that too, maybe pulling his memory strings from establishment.
Well, the history prior to us enacting the new C A P C legislation, I understand history is important in this community, but it does not have any bearing anymore on the C A P C. So whatever transpired before, what have we been, six years under the new A and P legislation? That's a new day, so anything-
You're still going to hear about it. Yeah, we're going to have to sit through the litany again, but-
Well, we won't have to sit through it. We also had a, and James was on the council when I was on the council, we had a committee look at some recommendations with Mayor Pate in his first half term, and I'll see if I can find those recommendations too. Never went, we never went anywhere after that, but anyway.
But we're trying.
We're trying, that's it, so. Anyway, so we'll still, once we get that, and I'll get you the information, try to, David, on that. Our next order of business will be Joe Gunnels, if I can have a motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay. I think within your packet, you probably have an application for a group tour franchise. I'm not sure if you've read through that. I'm going to go ahead, and Mr. Gunnels is here, and just have him come up and give us a brief, Joe likes to talk because this is his business, is in group tours, and we'll see if we can get a brief summary, Joe. I say that in a joking manner.
Well, I'm Joe Gunnels, Joe Gunnels Tours, Eureka Springs Tram Tours. Good to be here to address the council again. I didn't really come with a report, just came to be here in case there were questions and for the approval or not of the current application. But I will say that the tram tours are doing excellent. The last two years, they have increased from the year before, and reviews are great. We're doing excellent on Trip Advisor, which is very powerful. Hope that you all have checked Trip Advisor and read some of the reviews, they're really mostly all excellent. We got one, one three-star review last year, was the worst one that we got, and it was kind of actually almost comical, because the comment was that we stopped at Historic Hotel, and the guide suggested that they enjoy the view from the fourth floor, and then the reviewer said, "What view? Trees?" Question mark. So now I feel compelled to tell all of our folks when we stop there that the view they're going to see is going to be lots and lots of trees, as well as the Christ the Ozark statue and other things. But anyway, other than that, they were all four and five-star reviews. We've maintained that this year, and things are going well, and we're happy.
Mr. DeVito?
I would move to approve the franchise application. I have read the Trip Advisor, and it's like the number one attraction in Eureka Springs, and people speak well of it, and I think Joe's a good representative of Eureka Springs, and I've heard nothing but good things about the tram tours, and it's reflected in the Trip Advisor reviews, and, you know, so I would move to reapprove his franchise.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, sing five of saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I have, I don't know whether y'all got a copy of the report or not from Bobby Ray? Yeah. You know, as mentioned, he's adding, there's going to be a couple more structures, though it's going to be on the list, and the owners are currently being notified. Of the six residences, two were demolished and have started in reconstruction, and two are in the process of being repaired. One is deciding what to do, and then one is still in probate. I don't know if this comes up with your answers, or if you have some other specific questions?
It's been a long process since the Clean City Ordinance to get to this point, but it's nice to see the action taking place, because obviously, the point was, a lot of these structures set for a tremendous time before, you know, the action started. And part of, and I know it's not, the name of it isn't the Clean City Ordinance, it has a different name, but we call it that, but it included very carefully, based on what Bobby Ray and Glenn Booth had mentioned, a section in there to allow, give them some structure, to allow them to deal with people who are not maintaining their homes to a level that was up to par for safety and health and everything, and they didn't have that before. So it's nice to see that even though the action to date is a little bit slow, but at least it is in place and it's working. And I have noticed a big difference, if you come down, if you just take the upper historic loop and you start down it, and you start looking at those homes that have come up for sale recently, and you look at the prices people are getting for their homes in this town, I think we're doing very well. They certainly, to protect people that are investing, be they second homeowners, residents, or whomever, when they put that kind of investment in this town, they deserve to have an area around them that is maintained to some level or standard, and it does not affect the value of their property or their ability to sell. And I think that ordinance, when it's enforced, it meets those needs, and it's nice to see it.
And, you know, some of these, we had one in particular in town, and the owner was in a nursing home, and couldn't, you know, trying to get him to do anything, and he kept trying to, he couldn't understand why the city couldn't help, and finally, his sons took it over, and they probably could have demolished it, but to their credit, they're trying to save it, although they're, I think they understand, they realize now that they have bitten off a large bite, and it's taken time for them to make changes too.
We have, but then we also have people that are buying some property that was severely neglected. You just look around on Washington Street, the old white dove, I mean, how, seven years that thing has set there, and looked horrible, and now look, Paul Henry got it, and even though they haven't started construction, we have the White House next door. So there is an opportunity, if some of these people can't maintain or so, to put it up on the market, and some people will come in and buy them, and we have rehabbed them.
Of course, the problem with this other structure was, he didn't want to sell it either.
Yeah.
So, yeah, and when they're out of state, it creates another issue, so. All right, our next issue is on the report from Public Works Director. Get a motion to discuss on that?
So moved.
Second.
And again, I think y'all have probably in your packet a report, well, maybe not, because it did come in late. You may not have gotten it, and if not, let me go ahead and read it for the public. It says, you know, "Dear Mayor, I know there's a lot of concern and interest in the addition of fluoride by the Carroll Boone Water District in our distribution system. Our meeting with the district in McGedwin-Williams and Yates went well, and we're sharing ideas and data. I believe they understand our concerns and will continue to accept our input. I have not received the results of our lead and copper test from the A D H, our exiled Department of Health laboratory, as they are three months behind when I inquired. I have decided not to purchase a portable spectrometer, at least until the next budget, and utilize our wastewater lab. I've already started upgrading to the point we'll be able to sample over 200 different water parameters. We will still need a large investment for our lab to become certified. I will be able to run extra samples in October, and as soon as I have analyzed the lead results, I will know what areas of the system we need to focus on. Please rest assured that we will not blindly accept test results, and we will continue to monitor our water, including areas I've covered in my last report. We've had three significant water leaks in the past week alone." Dwayne Allen. Going on, we met Dwayne and myself with the engineers with McGedwin-Williams and Yates, also with representative from the Carroll Boone Water District, I want to say last week, to discuss what's going on with them, everything from their water rate increase to the fluoride testing. And they are submitting our tests to us, not in, as promptly as we want, but they are submitting test tests. We are being assured too, by those tests, that they're still meeting the standards for the minimum of the fluoride. The other issues, of course, are, one of our biggest concerns was the water rate increase that we had talked about, and I don't know whether I've sent you copies of those minutes yet or not. If not, I will get a copy of those. If not, I will get a copy of those to you. That show, you know, I think, two years ago, they came before the council asking for a resolution in support of the water rate increase, and they were gonna go either from, anywhere from 25 cents to 50 cents per thousand. They ultimately ended up being able to do 25 cent per thousand, and that's what we've been paying since April on there, at approximately a cost of about $8,000 a month. So, we still need to, and we'll be addressing that when we get into some more of our budget workshops into there, in there, in talking with y'all about what, where we need to go with that situation. And again, David, I don't know, this came up from a request from you, and I don't know if that's a response or not.
My concern still is before I would feel comfortable passing it on, which is a very easy thing to do. You know, I mean, if you're coming up with a shortfall, just increase rates, you know, that's, I understand that, and you know what? It may come down to that. It absolutely may, that may be the final thing. But I still would like to see the analysis that I asked for last time, and the breakdown of the number of meters that were commercial installed, and those that were installed, how much the water went up, and how much was collected residential, the percent that went up, how much was collected, and then based on that of a forecast of how much revenue is going to be coming into Public Works because of the meters, which we were told would be significant at the time when we first went through this, and now seems to be getting a little bit vaporous with the figures, and it's kinda moving. So I would prefer to definitely have said that I felt very comfortable that due diligence was done, and that was the only way to deal with it.
We're working on your analysis, because we're really looking into the complete water and sewer into there. And of course, it's also, just for your own reference, too, you know, there hadn't been any sewer rate increase in probably almost 10 years. So, everything else has gone up, but we've kept our sewer rates the same, so. But we will get you those reports, so we can see. Go ahead.
We have a lot going on with financing, and money, and shifting, and revenues, and this is just one piece of it. There's other issues out there, too, very obviously. And so, I would just want to be sure that the public understands that we're trying very, very hard to do the very best we can to maintain a level that's not necessarily gouging people, because that's not the right word, but not necessarily just really nearly raising things, because we haven't tried any other avenues first.
Well, of course...
We're giving them that message, but...
Well, you know, I guess my feeling is that every other city along this Carroll Boone Water District went ahead and increased, we're still the last city that has not passed this on. And it is, it is literally a pass-on, because we just got hit with it. We're not talking about other areas of water loss, or lines losing water, and our lines or anything else. This is just a cost that's been given to us, that's running about $80,000 a year.
So we've uncovered it?
Yeah. All right. Any other questions? All right, that brings us up to our other item, Item Six, as we've heard and heard our public deal on our, it says, "Update on Vulture Relocation." Can I get a motion to discuss?
So move.
Second.
It's really not an update on a relocation, there hadn't been anything decided. What's happened is I had several phone calls by a resident who was said that he couldn't get his house financed, refinanced, he couldn't get a loan on his house. I talked to the appraiser, and the appraiser said the same thing. The appraiser went out to the house, the roof is being, literally being eaten by the vultures, not to mention all the other ramifications that come from the birds sitting on your roof and everything else. So, he cannot sell his house, because he can't even get a loan on it. And this wasn't just from the owner, I went ahead and did talk to the appraiser on there. So, the question came up, and of course, we have had this issue before, that's come before the council, and we've had pros and cons on it. The last time, for some reason, and I don't remember whether the council elected to do it, or whether the city just decided to do it on their own, but decided to go ahead and try to scare the vultures away from their roost. And I think that lasted for one day, or maybe not even one day, it may have only been one cannon fire, and then it stopped. There's basically, if the council decides to pursue anything, I mean, we're basically at the point here, and I'm bringing it up to the council, because this was something that came to my office, and I'm surprised, David, you hadn't heard from it, since it's in your area. No, so, no, it's not Bob's, I don't think. But whether or not we want to do anything, or leave it, let it alone. I mean, that's two options.
What's the homeowner tried to do?
He's not sure what he can do. He can't fire off shotguns, he can't shoot the vultures.
No, but, I mean, I would prefer that the homeowner try something before it's thrown at the city.
Yeah, he's at a loss as to what to do, yeah.
Because every, everything we do is going to be temporary. The only solution is what Bull Shoals did, and that's to kill some of the vultures and hang them up, so that the other vultures can see it, so, you know...
They have had luck with the cannon fire, if it's done. But the problem is, it's gotta be done an hour at a time, for between six and eight, or 30 minutes, for three days. We've never done that.
I know from living on Spring Street, I had 100 vultures in the tree across from the house. They were there for three years, maybe, until they decided to locate somewhere else in the neighborhood, and that's what's going to happen. They will just go somewhere else in town, they will not leave town, we will just put them in somebody else's backyard. And do people want to hear a cannon going off every, you know, few minutes, for a couple hours every morning? I mean, you know, and that's not a permanent solution, either.
Yeah. We went through that discussion three, four, or five years ago, so, but I'm just bringing it up again. It's up to the council.
Well, how big an area is being affected by these vultures? Is it just a small area that has one house, or have you had a lot of complaints from a wide area?
We've had some complaints, but we've also had some people that, you know, obviously, we had one, the lady tonight, who loves her vultures.
Yeah, I've had...
And she lives in that same area.
Yeah, and this man's problem with his roof, is it the vultures roosting there, or is it the ca... Okay.
And they're pecking at it and eating it.
Okay, and nothing will work like netting? That discourages a lot of birds and thinks you would find netting there, and they'd get tangled in it, and they've just about, that's the end of that, they just don't go back there anymore. Has he tried anything?
That I don't, I don't know, to be honest with you.
Okay.
Is there a department in the city that would be not harsh over? They had enough trouble with the geese, they surely got out of that mess.
You see how thick that was.
Yeah, that really worked well. That would be, could come up with some thought processes, or?
The only two, and...
Is the kiln and...
Or the, yeah, the loud noises. And as James mentioned, I think, and we don't really know, but more than likely, it's just gonna relocate them somewhere else. Whether it's in the city or outside the city, remains to be seen where they go.
Outside the city, but this would be a positive effect.
Well, what is it about this man's roof that is so attractive to the vultures?
I have no idea. I haven't asked a vulture.
Well, it seems like we don't have enough, I mean, surely, somebody has solved this problem somewhere. I don't think we have enough information on exactly...
But is it really our problem?
What's causing the problem?
I mean, be crude about it, but I'm just trying to figure out, is it really our problem that...
Well, it is, and, I mean, it's, you know, it's certainly affecting his property and health and safety on his...
And he is a citizen and everything. But then you kinda look on the amount that it's affecting, and, you know, how much is it affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Eureka Springs? And if it's isolated to one area, well, I would, I think that's horrible, if I was, that was my house, I would, I would probably...
Wow.
I'd like to see the homeowner try some things, a motion-activated sprinkler system or something like that, they use that for deer, that, you know, I mean, I'd like to see him try something first, before, you know, you run to the city, you know, I'm of the same opinion, I understand his plight, but, you know, we have one homeowner that has an issue, and who, to our knowledge, hasn't tried anything on his own to mitigate the situation. You know, I question whether it's the responsibility of the city at this point. I mean, if you have a lot of neighbors complaining, then we have to think about it, but...
Or if it was a city park, where we had our citizens going to a park, but... That sounds terrible, but...
Yeah, we've got groundhogs, you know, destroying my yard and undermining the foundation of my house. I mean, should I call the city and say, you know, what are you gonna do about the groundhogs?
It's a mess.
Well, it isn't, it isn't a health issue, then. I mean, he's not complaining about the birds...
I think it's a health issue for him.
Depositing ca-ca all over, and it's, you know, has bacteria...
Well, what I can do is, I can go back, and again, you know, this is just something I wanted to bring up to the council, and I told him I would, I can go back and ask to see if I can get him to do, if taking some sort of proactive approach, and go from there.
Give you some contact people or some reference points, or, I'm sure you...
Well, he has, and he had been contacting, I mean, there's not, I don't know whether the netting would work, I don't know whether the sprinklers would work, obviously, that's something that is not in, it's been tried, because, you know, this is, I guess, you know, at least one particular house, I don't know if it's affecting other houses or not. So, I'll go back with that on there.
Good, thank you.
Yeah. All right. Let's go ahead and talk about Parks and Christmas. Pat is here to represent the Parks Department. We had, and can I get a motion to discuss?
So move.
Second.
All right. Several weeks ago, we had Donna Woods, the interim director for the Parks, came and said, you know, "It's time for Christmas." Well, you know, we've got, we've got a lot of Christmas decorations, unfortunately, they are scattered out, and because they have been hem-hauled, and they've been put together randomly and everything else, we don't have a good, a lot of good components left of our... She has came up, she came up with a budget of $15,000, and I don't, I thought I had that itemized in here somewhere, but, oh, there it is, I do have it. To help replenish the Christmas decor, and also to provide proper storage. One of the problems we've seemed to have had is, when we take down these reeds and all of our Christmas decorations, we've just been putting them in hodgepodge places, and a lot of that's been causing damage to the wiring and everything else. And so, because we, and it used to be kind of an embarrassment as a citizen to see that we were on the Tour of Lights for the state, and then we didn't have much tour, much lights. We've gone through this exercise for Christmas lights, and James knows this, as well as anybody...
About every five years.
For years, I think, since my wife was on the, on the director of the CAPC, and we spent gobs of money to light up the city, and then we had people who wouldn't turn the lights off and left them up there, and bulbs burning out, and nothing worse than having lights in March with, having your Christmas lights on. But what Donna has came up with is a solution, and what I'd like to ask, and Pat can come up and speak a little bit about it, too, is we've found some, we've got some money, we have found that's non-committed, that's for community, it was acted, I think, for the community down on the Harmon Parks Building. We had $30,000 that, well, actually, I think we had a little bit more than that. We spent some for remodeling the basement of it. And what I'd like to do is get permission, and try to get the council to go in with the, to put in $10,000, and then get the CAPC to put in five, for a total of $15,000. I think the CAPC has a budget for Christmas into there. But, T, let me have Pat come up and kinda explain where we're at, and what we're doing.
I'm Pat Mulholland, I'm the gardener, as you know, for Parks and Rec. I'm here to represent Parks and Rec. And what I'm here for is to represent the city itself, only because I've been having complaints every year, as you know, I'm the one who puts up Christmas with helpers, my little elves, but, every year, I have to put up less and less lights, because they're just burning out. We've had the same lights for years, so, there are springs that I only, this year, will only be half-lit, because I don't have enough lights. One of the biggest things is Plainor Hill, you know, that's 600 feet of lighting coming down the hill, and, you know, every year, most, it has to be replaced again. We're, the Preservation Society last year gave us some money to replenish those lights there, but I don't have enough to do all of Basin Park. We used to light up all of the shrubs and bushes there, and we no longer have enough lights for that. So this is just a replenishment, and it's really, you know, a lot of the citizens have been complaining that the parks aren't getting lit up like they were before, and it's true. I mean, every year, we just have less and less lights. We have converted all, everything over to LED, so that we can be, you know, more efficient with the use of power, and then, of course, they're longer lasting. So, you know, we're asking for this, just so that we can replenish what we did have. It's not gonna be this, you know, grand showing, it's just gonna replenish everything, get everything back up to par, as far as the springs and parks go in the city. And then the storage itself, what had happened is that we used to have it all stored over behind the PD, but then the Public Works really needed that storage area to put some of their stuff, because they're short on storage, just like we are. So now, we do have it just kind of scattered all over the place. And I looked into steel containers to store the Christmas stuff, so that we have it all in one place, and it stays in good shape. And those are gonna run, you know, for the square footage that I need, was gonna run somewhere around $9,000, just for that alone. In the presentation, you'll find a section in there for remodeling of the, what used to be the kids' shop over at Parks and Rec, and what we're gonna do is just redo the basement. It's already city-owned property, so it's our property, I might as well utilize that. And I actually get three times the storage by remodeling that, and we're just gonna do wall-to-wall shelving in there. And a good chunk of that is gonna, is definitely gonna be ventilation, as most, some of you may or may not know, there was a mold issue down there. So a lot of it's gonna be ventilation, just so that we can make sure everything stays in good condition. So I'm here just to answer any questions that you might have, but, you know, it's definitely needed, we're due for a rehash, you know, I mean, it's just like with the Christmas tree over at Basin Park, you know, we don't have a tree this year. You know, everything's just slowly dying out, you know, I have to repaint all the deer, I have eight deer that need to be repainted, so that we don't lose them. Again, you know, one of the things with those is, I just haven't had the proper storage for them, so they are starting to rot and such, and I really want to stop that from happening, because they're still in really good shape.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
The 15,000 is probably, knowing Donna and Parks, is probably the minimal amount bare bones. So, since Lonnie's here, Lonnie, has everybody pretty well, that was allocated capital for this year, have they actually used their capital? Are they going to?
I believe that, for the most part, everything has been utilized.
Lonnie, come up here, so we can...
And this is definitely minimal.
I had a strange feeling it was, I'm just gonna see if there's some extra money here.
here.
Okay, this, this money that the mayor's talking about has been sitting in this account for, oh, I don't know, ten years or longer. As of today, there's thirty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars and some change, I believe.
In that account?
Yes.
And it's been there how long?
I don't know, five, ten years. I, you know, I don't know just exactly how long. And there hasn't been any activity out of it. And it originated, as the mayor said, money from General Fund Capital to remodel down at Harmon Park, so I understand the building down there. And a part of it was used, and then this has been the remainder. And it's been sitting there, like I said, for all these years.
So, it's legitimate to redirect that money?
I think toward, toward a capital type of thing, which this is capital expenditures. And again, to go into what, you know, Pat was saying, is that there's, really, the city is just really looking, you know, pretty bad at Christmas time. And I think that it would be great to spend some of this money. It's community-oriented, you know, for everybody, and get the city looking really spruced up at Christmas time, because I think it means a lot to a lot of people.
And Mayor, I'm going to go out on a limb and say, I'd like to make a motion that this account with thirty-four some thousand dollars be redirected for Christmas in Eureka Springs, and the Parks, the Parks Department to bring the lights and all other things that they need up to the best, highest level they can possibly get, to make this place shine.
One second for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. This, the whole Christmas lights thing, the problem is that we don't do it large enough. I think all of those things that we had on light posts last year, all that needs to go, because it wasn't big enough or spectacular enough. This thirty thousand dollars isn't that much money. And I think we should concentrate it into areas, and really just make certain areas spectacular. I think the entrance to the city on the top of Plainer Hill, I think the railing, the sidewalk that goes downtown, perhaps that little park there next to the museum, and then the springs. And what I'm saying is that we should concentrate this money to make something large and spectacular, rather than putting a little bit of things here, that little snowflake there, a little wreath there. Because if it isn't large and big enough, it makes us look pathetic. Makes us look poor and pathetic. So, and last year was not good, because everything was a little shop-worn. And the decorations that we have, they've just, they need to go. Those wreaths, they've lost their lanterns, they don't have their lights.
Unfortunately, and as soon as we repair the lights, we're up for two weeks, and they burn out.
Yeah. So, let's do something that, that works, and it might be small, but it'll be impressive. Instead of, you know, just little bits and pieces, trying to scatter it around and decorate the whole city, because it just makes us look poor.
James?
So, might I understand that out of that money, you'll be purchasing lights, and then also renovating?
Yes, we'll be renovating the lower part of the kids' shop. And it's, we'll be doing, the whole basement will be converted over to nothing but Christmas storage.
We have-
Which will actually give us a lot of space to store, and all the shelving will be built appropriately to house individual items, to keep them from deteriorating or being broken, or anything like that.
So, we're looking, I mean, Parks is going to be using some of that money for lights, and then you're asking for ten thousand from council, and five thousand from A&amp;P, in addition to access to those-
Yeah.
-funds, which will be used in two ways, to renovate-
Six thousand of that will be used for the renovation of the basement.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, and the lights, you know, then it'll all be the lights, and like you were saying, and like David was saying, we're, I'm talking just replenishing some of the stuff that's been missing. But I agree, you know, let's make it spectacular.
Actually, the motion is not even to worry about the CA PC, and doing a whole thirty thousand-
Use that account. It's been sitting there all these years.
Total account.
So, we don't have to put anything in. If it's been there that many years, it's there, and the city needs to look good, and it's still sitting there, let's get the city looking good.
And it's for Harmon.
Image to me is, of the city and what we're presenting to people is important.
I agree, wholeheartedly. And whenever this issue came up, and of course, I've heard about the Christmas lights ever since I've been here, and I've watched them, as Joyce said, you know, they just continue to deteriorate. And I remember, whenever my kids were small, we made a special trip to Eureka Springs to see the lights. And so, when this issue came up, and, you know, of course, we all know that money's an issue anytime, anywhere. But it's been sitting there, just interest been added every month, and so forth. And like I said, there's thirty-four thousand one hundred and seventy-three dollars, I believe. So, I suggested to the mayor that maybe this would be a source where, because it's really not an expense for Parks, it's not really, in my opinion, an expense for CA PC. It's community. It's for the city, so.
At the same time, I'd like to, if we choose to do that, and the city coughs up thirty-four thousand some money and seeds, and I like Joyce's idea, let's concentrate it. And I know Pat will do an excellent job with it. I have no question about that at all. But I'd like to issue a challenge to the organizations of Downtown Network, the Arts Council, and various other civic organizations in town, to rise to the occasion, and let's get on Christmas, everybody together, working. So, if we can't totally do all the businesses downtown and maintain them, that maybe the Downtown Network comes up, and they get the businesses together and get on board. And let's just issue the challenge to make Christmas something.
Sure. To address your question on that, I actually do have a meeting coming up on Wednesday, and it will be involving the CA PC, Downtown Network, Preservation Society. So, we'll all be meeting about Christmas, and-
Nice to take the four thousand in there with you.
Exactly. And then we can, you know, then we can really start looking at getting some volunteers to help with it. You know, a lot of people are just really want to help, you know, so that would be a great way to get the community involved, definitely.
And I almost hate to say this, but could we contact Harley-Davidson and find out what they're going to do with Pine Mountain, and maybe they could make a big deal up there? They have money. And Parks, could, I know it's, and please try to talk Parks and Tourism into taking us off of their Tour of Lights thing, because we can't compete yet. We're not up to speed. We can't compete with the other towns. And if they get really upset because they think they have to have us on there, then they're sitting on a bucket of money. Tell them to send fifty thousand dollars up here, so that we can get this town looking, and then they can put us on their list. Otherwise, forget us. I mean, you know, come on. They can help.
Sure.
If they, if they think we're such an important thing to their Christmas tour thing, then they need to pitch in.
All right, any further discussion? I've got a motion and a second to allocate the money from our community fund toward the Christmas lights and parks. All those in favor? If I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's move.
Thank you.
Do you need to come back to get this?
Uh-
Was yours a yes? Yeah, I said aye.
All right. That concludes our, everything that's on our agenda. And now, we'll go around to our agenda setting. Bob, I'll start off with you.
Update on the public building?
Okay. I can probably send everybody a memo on that. But anyway, James?
Can we get a second on that?
David?
Bob's petition, can we get a second?
Second.
How?
Thank you.
Joyce?
No, I don't have anything.
All right. How about public comments? Joyce, got any comments?
Counselor, no.
David?
No, I'll announce my book when it's ready, other than that, no.
No, I'm just going to go beat off again one more time, put a plug in for Parks and Christmas this year. And it would really be great to see a swell of organizations and everything come together, really.
It'd be great if we could have a matching-
Get the pride back. It would, it would be great. If even the businesses in town just really went all out and do what they could do, just in the front of their business, would be great.
Yep, I agree. And bring, bring Christmas back to Eureka. Yep.
Merry Christmas.
Absolutely. James?
No comment.
No? All right. See, I have, we're coming up, where's my comments here, somewhere? I know we've got some. There we go. Upcoming events. This coming weekend, Corvette Weekend. Oh, yeah. One, two, we get rid of the motorcycles, we're bringing in the Corvettes. Parade is on Saturday, and I'm not sure what time the parade is. Is it an evening parade?
It's at eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock at night. Yep, it's a night parade. And so, then also, the Folk Festival's coming up, October the tenth, eighth through the tenth, with parade at two o'clock on Saturday, the tenth. And that evening is Rita Cooges coming into our town, so get your tickets up there. It's going to be a great show at the auditorium on there. And then one of my favorite events is October the fifteenth, which is a Thursday, and then the sixteenth and seventeenth. And then on Halloween, October the thirtieth and thirty-first, is Voices from Eureka Silent City, which will be out at the cemetery, starting at 5:30. And this is brought to you by our Eureka Springs Historical Society. If you've never been, it's an incredible event out there. It's a little performance going on of historic characters, and it's always very entertaining and a lot of fun. October seventeenth is Oktoberfest, down here in the auditorium parking lot, Basin Park and the courthouse. And then October twenty-third, it's the Mini Coopers in the Ozarks, with a parade on Saturday, the twenty-third, at four o'clock. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so move. Thank you all.
Thank you.